Before we do begin our meeting, we always hold an invocation. Pastor John Walworth from the Congregational Church was on our schedule for tonight, but I don't see him here. Is there anybody here who would like to offer an invocation before we begin? If not, I will lead us in prayer. Please join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of prayer. We thank you for your guidance and direction. We pray that you will give us clear insight as to what's best for the city and the residents of Perry. Give us all safe travel home, keep us healthy, and let us all hear what each other has to say. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And now I'll bring the meeting to order and ask that you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am so impressed that he knows that whole thing. Good job.
I think this is my sixth time here.
All right. Well, you did a great job. Oh, thank you. Devin, would you take roll call, please?
Mike Connel. Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galbavie.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Todd Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Suhana.
Here.
Everybody is here except Councilwoman Mike Connel.
Mike did let me know yesterday that I wasn't going to be able to be here today. Looking now for reading and approval, or excuse me, approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per second.
All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking now for reading and approval of the minutes. We have two previous meetings that we need to approve. They were both on the same day.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2022 regular meeting and then December 7th, 2022, special meeting.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We'll move now into pre-approved reports and presentations. The first of which is our 2022 Christmas Light winners, and I'll turn that over to Larry Lambert.
Thank you, too. First off, before I get into the actual presentations, I want to applaud everybody in the city. There were immense number of great lights and still are out there, lights and displays for the holiday season. So I've got to, we couldn't award everyone, but I want to applaud everyone for the job that they have done this season. I'd like to recognize the judges for this year. We had Fred Bauer and Robert Kittle representing last year's winners. We're part of the judging activity. Deborah Graves and Kelly Graves, who are residents of the city, joined in, as well as Mindy Galbavie and her husband Tom and myself and my wife Linda may comprise the judging committee for this year. We did add for this year a couple of new positions to the awards. We previously had done first, second, and third place. We have added a fourth and fifth place award winners to this year's program. And also, as you drive around the city, we have put up for each of the five places yarn signs that will be up through the holidays and into the new year. So if you're driving around and are curious as to whether or not the lights you're looking at are on the winning list, they should all have a yarn sign identifying those. So without further ado, I will try to go ahead and walk through, starting with fifth place. Cody and Angela Dean won fifth place at 362 Green Street. Is someone here representing the Deans tonight? Okay, we'll make certain that they get their check. In fourth place at 315 East Second Street, we have Tim and Linda McDaniel's. Congratulations. Thank you. In the third place, we have Scott and Jody Johnson.
Thank you.
And that's 620 North Watkins, correct?
Yes, this, thank you.
620 North Watkins. I was going from memories, well, I just wanted to be sure. And then in second place, we have Josh and Lindsay Vornard at 375 Clearwater. Now, they put up a challenge because they were winners a couple of years ago, and last year they were part of the judging. And I said, why didn't you put so many lights up? They said, because I didn't realize they were in the process of moving. They're now into their new houses past spring, and they put a major push on to try to win it. But the first place winners kind of beat them out, unfortunately, or fortunately. Joel and Carol Crane at 119 West First Street, first place. Congratulations. So here.
Wonderful. Thank you all, and thank you, judges. Thanks, Larry. We'll move now into our audit presentation. That would be for the 2021-22 budget year. And our auditors are going to present that by a Zoom call as soon as Devin gets it set. Megan's, our treasurer, is also here.
Do you want to come sit up here? Are there any questions? Sure, you do.
If anyone has questions for Megan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have you on Zoom. You're on the screen. Everybody can see you, Luke. Council is all here, so I'll have them speak up loud if they have any questions, but it's all yours.
All right. Can you enable screen sharing for me, please?
I think so. Does that work?
That works?
Okay.
All right. Did you mean everyone? How is everyone doing?
Very good.
Good.
Good. All right. Thanks for letting me join virtually. We've been ravished by the flu, among other things, over the last two weeks. We still have people in the house there. So I like to share joy with my students. Figure it's better from home. So I will go through the audit report, and if you guys have questions, as I go through, feel free to speak up or copy, or I'll ask for questions at the end as well. Starting here on the PDF that I have on the screen, the biggest, there was a little bit of a change or intrigue. I'll memorize what these reports look from last year. So in case we didn't, the opinion paragraph was kind of buried on the second page. And so now we've changed it, and we put it right up front. What we have here is boilerplate language, just to say that actually we did your audit. Everything was adjusted properly after our audit procedures. And you have an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can have for an audit. I think everything is materially correct that's presented in these financial statements. The rest of, the rest of this is mostly boilerplate language, which the paragraph right here in the middle just says that we don't audit the Perry Building Authority. We rely on the other auditors to do so. And then just gives a little bit more detail on exactly what an audit is, what you guys are responsible for, and what we're responsible for. Moving on, management discussion and analysis is the first part. I'm going to mostly just touch on this section because of the comparison from this year to last year, where the finance statements themselves don't compare the two. But management discussion and analysis is a required part of, is considered requires supplementary information. And so all of this is required by standards to be put in this section of it. Part I want to look at is the summary of net position. So this basically takes your governmental activities, your business-type activities, and shows current years prior year. So this, I think, is the best kind of snapshot of, okay, as of June 30th, 2022, how are we doing compared to June 30th, 2021? You'll see total assets for governmental activities has continued to increase by about $400,000 from just over $3 million to $3.4 million. Liabilities decreased, so they were $1.2 million. They dropped down to $888,000. And so your net position, which is your asset minus your liabilities for governmental activities, went from $1,539,000 to $501,000, and now it's about $2,001,323,600. So you'll see that there's a fairly large increase in that position. So that's fantastic to see. You'll see an increase here in the business-type activities, not quite as much, but it went from $2.8 million to almost $2.9 million. So you did, did get an increase there as well. So we're in the right direction. Net rate did be changed in that position, so same thing in comparative, just showing revenues compared to prior year and the expenses compared to the prior year. So you'll see general governmental activities revenue was actually down a little bit, $1.675 million, and in 2022 is $1.637 million. So did have a decrease in that, but did have a larger decrease in overall expenses from right here. You'll see $1.3 million. You dropped back down to $1.1 million. So that's why you have the $533,000 increase in total net position for governmental activities. Business type stayed relatively consistent on revenue. It did increase a little bit, but so did expenditures. Those, those went up a bit. So you'll see $1.1 million last year, $834,000. But overall, net change is $590,000 in that position. So again, you're, you're going, you're increasing your net position and not decreasing it, so that's all you have to think. The rest of the management discussion, and now some of the more basic concepts that require you to be in here. Kind of just documents, okay, well. Within the revenue, our largest, largest category of revenue for the governmental fund, the property Jackson Special Assessments, which is about 50% of your revenue budget. State share revenue is 32%, and the majority is only 73%. Expenditure, your largest expenditure is public safety at 36%, followed by general government at 32%, and public works is the very largest activity at 24%.
Devin, your stuff.
I'm totally interested.
Luke?
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's a question. Hold on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Luke, I just noticed when I was reading through this that in the expenditures paragraph, it talks about our cemetery being an expenditure. We don't have a cemetery. We have no cemetery, so if you want to take that out of there.
Yeah, that was just probably some standard language that kind of got thrown in there, what general government is. I will go ahead and make notes to take that out of there. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
All right. General fund budgetary highlights. You came in under budget by $144,000 overall. Total budget was $1.4 million. You came in at $1.1 million. Financial analysis of the city's funds. So of the funds, you had the general fund increased to $30,000. Major street increased, so basically the net income for that fund. Major street was $26,000 increase. Local street, almost $93,000 increase. Drug law enforcement was just over $1,000 increase. Building authority had a slight decrease of $1,300. And then your net position for sewer fund increased by $88,000, and you did have a small decrease in the water fund, and that was about $30,000. I believe that is where your big water power expenditure was coming in. So I'd imagine that we saw a decrease there.
Yeah.
Most are covered by grants, but, but yeah, it created a lot of expenditure there. So that part, that, that section gives you a really good snapshot of all the activity of the pool. It basically summarizes all of the net tabular of financial information. So I won't necessarily go through them unless, unless there's a desire for me to look at anything bigger or any fund specifically, because, you know, these different statements do have the different funds working out in a little bit more detail.
Anybody have a specific thing they want him to touch on? I think we're good to go.
And, yep. Last thing, just the budgetary. There was a couple line items over budget, not by a lot. That's just one area you want to try to get, make sure everything at year end is just what we do your final budget amendment before year end. Approve them and then try to get them in the right line item. So that will be noted, very noted in the audit. It's three, it looks like three very small ones. $600, $757, $3,900, and $652. So it's not a huge thing, but technically, you know, it's a, it is something that has to be noted, at least to make the audit. So just want to watch that one forward. Major street, local street, local county, because they were adopted this time of the fund. And the rest of it is just the old type corporation. One thing to note in comparison, I'm sure, a little earlier, you started the fiduciary trust. So there is assets here for the first time, or you don't see them over the past. And that says six, this is actually seven, so apparently there's six. I'm not very good with numbers, apologies. So you do see that here. And then I think a CD matured, and then you rolled a CD into this federal credit trust. So that is something new that you would see in audit that was not there last year. And as well, that's changing assumptions in this old type. You decreased your liability dramatically. So that would have also helped with your net position throughout the year. This estimation decreased by $300,000. So that would have been reflected in the financial statements on the liability section. All right. That's really the general overview that I think that's most helpful for you for the council to look at. If anyone has any questions, concerns, comments, anything you want me to go into detail on?
Luke, I do have a question about our deposits. You had mentioned, this was on page 25, the custodial credit risk as it relates to deposits. And you go on to explain what portion of our deposits were not insured. What's the correction for that? What, what do we do to correct that, to get it all insured, or can we?
So you can. What you want to do is the council wants to kind of evaluate is it worth the hassle to do so?
You tell us. Is it worth the hassle to do so?
I mean, I, it's very common for municipalities to not have it all insured and uncollaterized. One of the things that you know are in good standing, then, you know, that, that can come into play. There is, there is a way, there's an account, and I don't know which banks have it and don't. You know, most recently, I know, has it, that I've worked with is the Bank of Ann Arbor, which I know has opened up in few, within county with the recent purchase of, or the Nat, First National, I think, which we're closest to. I forget what they call it. So basically, they take your money and they buy 200, usually about $240,000 worth of either CDs or just money market accounts in different banks. So while that bank holds your funds in, you know, say, you know, if you're trying to get it all 100% insured, you know, if you get them $2 million in that account, and they have that, they'll have public accounts within that that has invested approximately $240,000 in, you know, these banks throughout the U.S. that are each FDIC insured, which then would create, you know, you'd have most of your money, if not all of it, then FDIC insured. And really what that does is just in case the bank fails, you know, the bank is not going to reimburse your money all the way up to, you know, the one point that you have, it would only be $250,000 for bank. With, there's, with means value, there's some additional that may be covered, but that, it's either that, or you do it yourself, and you go to, you know, say, different banks and open up, you know, open up a CD at this bank, and open up a CD at that bank, or a money market at that bank, just to let it sit there, which I don't know that I would recommend that, because when you're, you just have too many bank accounts out there. So if you're going to do it, I would recommend doing it through a bank. That can put it in a, I cannot still imagine, I mean, think of the name of, the accounts that they call it. But I can, I can always follow up, but I'll get you the name of it, what they call it, if you don't worry about the FDIC.
Yeah, when you come up with that term, if you'll just send it to Megan, that would be great. So basically, if I'm understanding what you're saying right, and understand I'm, I'm not an accountant, nor will I ever be. But there's a limit. At each financial institution, there's a limit as to how much money each account holder can insure. So in order to insure all of our money, we would have to move portions of it into different financial institutions as CDs or money market accounts to be able to insure it all. Am I understanding that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We got it.
Yep. And I was able to look it up. It's, at least at the Bank of Ann Arbor that I know of, of an ICS account insured cash sweep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have questions so far for Luke? I think we're ready to move ahead when you are.
All right. Perfect. Let me just pull up my other, phase in, of course, my, my computer's freezing a little bit. Give me just a second. All right. Part of our procedures is we do go through internal controls for, you go through internal controls, and if there's any areas of where we think, hey, you can shore up this, or shore up that to make things more, more safe or more secure than, or we do look at that. For some reason, I'm not seeing, I don't know if I have someone to lead it there. My apologies.
We just don't have any issues, that's all.
That, that may be. I honestly don't see anything, I'm not sure why. And maybe there's, because I know we've been, you guys have been working on those the last few years, and so, and most of it has that. The biggest thing I would say is, I know this year was a transition year as far as Megan coming in and doing her thing. And we tried to do anything that there, you know, the adjustments, and then try to get used to. I know she's laid out, hey, we're going to use the electronic resources that we have to divest our ability, do that. So I think just as she's getting used to that, in the new position, some of the adjustments that maybe were usually made for it, but it's just a learning process. So I do want, I am going over it there. I mean, it is a plan as well, but I need to go at the end once you have approved the audit, just to say, okay, this is why we adjusted this this way or that way. And, you know, if this is a, if you're launching that, and you made this, you know, consistently year after year, then, then I'll look at what they're just, what you ought to look out for. But in some ways, not always, you know, they're not always going to be adjustments throughout, or in the audit, you know, we expect something, but it's not a lot. So that's just one thing that we make sure we keep an eye on. As I said, everything, you know, was a pretty smooth process. We, and Megan, and everyone, you know, NSA was not, I was out of town when the actual audit was, so I'm sure Devin and the mayor and the building owner were very helpful and everything, so we appreciate that. Just making a smooth process. You know, the turnaround this year was a little bit slow. We had some staffing issues on our end, and then some, I would do one maybe in November, December, even, next year I would have it done by November, maybe, and I probably, so. Something would go through. I'm sure you guys were, I know it's a great Christmas present if you were now, but if you're maybe November, maybe next year.
That's fine. It worked out just fine. So basically, what I hear you saying is, this is a pretty good audit.
Yeah, yeah. Everything, you know, we did have, we did have, the biggest thing that we had was, there was a number of adjustments we had to make, but given, given, you know, Megan's first year of doing everything, then I think it was pretty good. And there was, I think there were just some weird, you know, sometimes DSA kind of goes crazy, and so I think there was a couple things that, I think was, you know, not adjusted, or just one of those one-time things that kind of popped up, and we were able to work through. But aside the number of journalists, yeah, it was pretty smooth to leave. It's always a pleasure to work with the team there at the city.
Very good. Megan, did you have anything for Luke that you wanted to bring at this time?
I do not.
Megan says she does not have anything for you. Anyone else? Counsel, have any questions for Luke, or any things you'd like him to cover again? Counsel's good. I think we're all set. Luke, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We agree that you guys want to see a place to do it. I will work with Megan and the mayor to wrap it up, so that way we can get it submitted here before it is due to the state, and we'll open that. Hope everyone has a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. And if you guys need anything throughout the year, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye.
So that concludes the presentation of the audit from Luke. We'll move then, while Devin is getting this machine situated, into our public comment. Is there anyone here tonight for public comment? If you would like to share anything with us, you can step up to the podium, and you have five minutes to do that. You can ask.
Only five minutes? I got that to say.
Well, you got five minutes. You can do it again at the end. We have another public comment at the end.
Okay. I got some neighbors on the side of me that moved in four years.
First of all, what's your name?
Kathy Scherzer.
Spell your last name.
S-C-H-A-R-T-Z-E-R.
S-C-H-A-R.
T-Z-E-R.
T-Z-E-R, okay.
So neighbors moved in next door to me. They've been there four years, and they have four businesses going on. She has a puppy. She does puppies, I mean, she does dogs, they're grooming. Then she sells golden doodles. She's already had seven sets of puppies. She's already had seven sets of puppies. And then he gets kookoosies free, has people come in, we don't know who they are, fixing them up. And then he sells them for more than 28 doll, $2,800 or more. Then he buys motorcycles, lawnmowers, riding lawnmowers, uh, trucks, cars, Corvettes, trucks, fixes them in the front yard.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment?
Yeah.
Because I think we're already working on this, we have been working on this.
Yeah, but I wanted something done because this has been going on for four years and I wanted to show pictures of the waste they don't pick up from the dogs.
We, we don't, we don't need that. We have an ordinance enforcement officer, Ron Korzekian, he has been, um, in contact with these people. Our, um, zoning administrator, Leland Scott, has been in contact with these people, the health department has been there.
They don't change, they don't, they just keep doing what they want.
They, they are working on it, we will be following through.
They make their own rules and we have to live by the rules and they don't have to. And they got five sheds all over, but then they don't put nothing away. They have five sheds in the backyard. Nobody knows what we're going through, because you don't live with it every day, ending in hell.
I understand.
If it ain't the damn kookoosies in the summer, spring, the whole front yard. I didn't say nothing to them, I tried to get along with them. And then they said we turned them in the second time. I turned them in the first time because they had a shed in the front yard, they're not supposed to have a shed in the front yard. I asked, they called here and I said, can you have a shed in the front yard? And he goes, no, but go there and be friendly with them. Well, they never put the shed in the backyard, I let it go. And then the second time, somebody called them because they had flatbeds, cars, trucks, all parked like a, like a farm in the front yard. We're in the city limits. My husband was walking our dog, our little dog. The guy's in his car slowing down saying, you Schartzers turned us in. And that's when the ball started rolling and I, I'm sick of it. We called the police on them, they want us to come over in their yard and beat up a 75-year-old veteran from Vietnam. And me, we both have health issues. And I'm just tired of it. And I'm on my taxes, Lord, and I got a picture showing you how their backyard looks. It's trashed. And that's what they're going to do, that land he bought. She bought land off them puppies down the street and he's going to have a business there? He's going to be dumping oil in that stream. You don't have to believe me, but that's what's going to happen. These people, I don't know where they came from, but I wish they'd go back there because they burnt their bridges wherever they're from and now they want it, they think they own Perry because they got money. I'm on a fixed income. He's already made, I bet, more than $70,000 on kookoosies alone, maybe even more. She's already made $13,000 plus on seven sets of puppies. Now she's getting one, instead of getting one dog pregnant, she's getting two dogs pregnant, they're a couple of weeks apart. How can one person take care of 20, 22 puppies? They might not be in cages, but if she keeps having more dogs pregnant, yeah, how's she going to take care of all them dogs and puppies? And me and my husband, we can't go out in our yard, all we hear is puppies crying. They sit on their porch and let the damn things bark. My husband said, will you shut them dogs up? He's one of my neighbors, all of the neighbors say, shut your dog up. They don't want to beat you off. He wants us to come over in his yard and beat us up. And make it like we assaulted them. And we've been there 35 years almost, and they only been there four years, they feel like they've been there for 50. And we are tired of it. I wish some of you guys could live next door and see the stuff I have to hear, the slamming, they're honking at us. I got pictures showing the poop aisle. He had a, a big metal rooster, they had it in the front yard, I was calling it Colonel Sanders to myself. Well, they put it right by my fence because I look out my window, but they can look out their blinds, cut the side window and look at us cutting our grass and picking our dog poop up. I'm just sick of it. I've been a good neighbor, the trash, they need two trash barrels. Their trash thing, because she has that business with the dogs, grooming, will be filled up by Wednesday and then they'll have boxes and they blow all across the street. Guess who's going and picking them up? My husband. And he's not well, and he's got COPD and heart problems and I got health issues.
Why is he picking them up?
Because they're not going to do it. They let the trash blow with the lady next to, one down the other side. She said, she told him, pick your trash up. Pizza things come over my yard and all that and they stuck them between their plants because they're lazy, if there ain't any money involved, they're not going to do it. And them dogs are all dollar signs and puppies and I can't, I'm sick of it. She shouldn't be loved, she even told me one time. I said, hey, them dogs run with health issues. She said, that's how I make my money. That's what she said to me right in my face.
I, I hear your stress.
And they bark and bark and I didn't film or nothing because I didn't, I had a flip phone at the time. This has been going on for four years, it'll be going on five. Soon as spring comes, he'll have five kookoosies out in the front doing them, she's laughing with bubbles coming out. And the woman over there is getting water in her basement, she had to have her front yard all dug back up, put more pipes in it, she's on a fixed income too. I've been there 35, she's been there 30. Uh, Fred behind me's been there for 30, since 89. We're retired, we live on a fixed income, we keep our yards nice, we cut our grass. We do everything to keep being a, a nice neighbor, keep Perry looking good, nice. And I got to put up with these people with four businesses. This is not right. How can they have four businesses next door? They're using the city water up, she's got a big old pool right against the house, they moved it down, she got water in her basement, she told her she had a leak. She's nothing but a damn liar, the people next door, his last name is Brown.
Kathy, I'm going to have to stop you now because you're at your time limit. We do appreciate.
Do you want to look at the picture though, how the yard looks without the sheds and stuff?
I, I don't need it, I've been by it. Our zoning administrator, our ordinance enforcement officer have been, they're.
But they don't care.
They do care.
No, the people that live there don't give a shit, they're not going to give up that money.
Our ordinance enforcement officer has, um,
They don't care.
In the norm demo.
They don't care. They want us to be beat up, we're elderly, we've been there almost 35 years and I'm sick of it, I'm on my taxes, Lord. I got to live with people with four businesses. Any of you would not want that, I knew by you.
I recognize.
But they eat on the other side, he has to hear all that shit too.
I understand.
Fixing vehicles, he stripped a Corvette down and built it in two weeks, they had a tap with a light on. His son, building it back up, painting, we have to smell all that shit. Can't even open our windows up to letting the air in.
There, there are several ordinances that they are in violation of. They have been notified, they'll continue to be notified.
She even told Ron to shut, she told Ron to shut up. Ron was trying to tell her something, she, she said, shut up.
Kathy, and I'm trying to talk to you, if you could listen for a minute, please. I listened to you, please listen to me.
Yeah, you don't know what we're going through.
I do know what you're going through. And my sympathies are with you, we are doing everything that we can. I know that the health department and the building, um, department have been there, the county health department has been there. So it's being worked on, but I can't tell you
They should be stopped.
How it will turn out.
No, but they should stop right now with the kookoosies. They shouldn't be doing them puppies. I can see her having a business of grooming dogs, you know, we have to hear all that too, the slamming. She has tons of people that come over and get the dogs done, that's her business, okay. But then she goes somewhere else and does grooming too at another building like an hour away where she used to work, I think. She has like six, seven damn dogs over there, takes them to their mothers till they ease us down, then she brings the dogs back to her house. They're sneaky, they do stuff at night. I'm just telling you, they're crazy.
Well, I'm sorry for what you're going through, we are doing what we can do. And we will continue to do that, we will do the best we can to.
All I know is I want my taxes, if you don't shut that shit down next door, I want my taxes lowered. I wish I could move, but I don't, I don't have the money to move, I'm on a fixed income.
I understand.
I don't want to go to apartment, yeah? I don't want to, I want to stay in Perry, I'm a good citizen, I keep my yard nice, I don't keep shit junk all over for mice and rats and chipmunks. I try to keep my place nice for Perry.
Kathy, we, we appreciate, we appreciate what you're doing and again, I'm going to have to run into a close, but.
I just want to say how I feel because I'm just, it builds up after four years, if you live next door, you wouldn't like it.
No.
But I got to live with it and pay higher taxes. Thank you for talking to me.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else here tonight for a public comment? Okay, then we'll move ahead to communications. Devin, do you have any communications tonight?
Not tonight.
Under Mayor Reports, I'll just once again say that we are looking for someone to serve on the International Trade Corridor, um, also called the I-69 Trade Corridor Group. That group meets once every two months at the airport in Flint. Megan Galbraith, our city treasurer, is an alternate on that group, but we do need someone who would be interested in that. The, um, SEDP out of Owasso, Justin Horvath there, um, would be happy to talk to anyone that's interested, if you wanted to get more information about what types of things are being done through that group. If you are interested in serving on that group, just let me know. I'll also report to council that I have talked with Consumers Energy regarding the corner at Main Street and East Second Street downtown that we had gotten another complaint about being so dark. It is difficult to see the crosswalk there at night. And so I've talked more with Consumers Energy. They have evaluated it and said they can put an additional pole there. It would go right where that stop sign is at that corner, so it would be on the north side, the north corner there. It would be a wooden pole with a bracket, probably a 12-foot bracket, so it gets right out over that crosswalk. They would choose the type of fixture element that would need to go on there as to what would best put the light out where it needs to be. And the cost is $100. I just need a go-ahead, um, from council and I can go ahead and go online and order this to be done and it will be done.
Yes, I go ahead.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes. You don't need a motion?
Do I need a motion?
It's $100.
I would be safe, only because it wasn't something that was budgeted, this is out of the loop, otherwise it isn't your authority to do this on your own, so let's be safe and have somebody.
Can somebody make me a motion, please?
I move that we authorize the mayor to contract consumers to add a street light at Second and Main at the cost of the city of $100. Not to exceed $100.
I second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad, all of those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I will get that ordered right away. Um, and also, let you know that Devin did make up attendance charts for you to use if you are the chair of a committee. You can copy those and then at each meeting, there's the personnel. And I gave you yours. So we're good. Just make sure you take attendance and then turn those into here after your meeting is done. And that's everything I had. Committee reports. They have a committee report they'd like to make. Anybody? Nope? No committee reports.
Should we announce the date or wait until January?
I was going to wait until January.
Okay, sorry.
Month off right now.
We'll move to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and let the payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We don't have any old business, but we can move on to new business. That brings us to the, um, information about our parks. Megan, did you want to talk about that?
So you named your packets, I have new draft of a five-year parks and recreation plan, this is the plan that we've been working on for feels like eternity, but maybe five months now. It is ready for a 30-day public review prior to its adoption as required by the DNR. Um, we have collected and incorporated all of our public feedback from the survey. Um, and while it's out for 30-day public review, it is also required that we collect and incorporate the public feedback into the final version of the five-year plan. The goals, objective, objectives and actions were all based on our survey responses, our current park inventory conditions. Um, we also based it on the prior park plan, even though it wasn't a formally adopted plan by the DNR, it was a formally adopted plan here at the city. Um, it had goals and objectives that were not met in, since it was created, so we have rolled some of those forward into this new plan. And it was also based on park committee, uh, meeting conversations. Are there any questions about the draft of the plan as you see it now?
I don't, we're good with self.
I think it's very thorough. I, I don't have any questions about it, does anyone have any questions or discussion about that?
Where did the survey go off to? Was it a digital survey or an ad survey?
It was a digital survey, but all residents were mailed a postcard directing them to the digital survey. Um, the school district also helped by sending it out in the, it was a weekly newsletter, letter from the superintendent.
Gotcha. Could have that been put on the digital side and we'd have got that.
Uh, I, uh, was it, it might have been too long to be on the digital side.
Okay.
And we call it.
I, it was on the Carl's Board, it was posted at the library.
I think there was a mention on the digital board about a survey, I think.
Website, Facebook.
Did you not get it, is that?
I'm, I'm not sure. I have three kids and we both work separate jobs, we get a lot of mail. But definitely parks are something where we bring up in our household, but there aren't really many parks for our children around here, so.
I work for the postal service, I can testify, a lot of them got nailed.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure we probably got them.
Thank you for that.
So the next step for the plan is that there does need to be a formal resolution and a 30-day review period and then public hearings up.
If you have more discussion, um, council knows the time, if you have more questions, now's the time.
Is there anything, I went and found the actual survey results.
Yep.
It wasn't a quick link from the hot link to it, it took me to the survey. So I navigated my way there, but there may be a little cleanup that we could do for those folks that want to see that, that, those survey results.
I'll double-check that link because it should have taken you right to the published survey results.
Yeah, it took, I would say, at least a click that I made from that took me to the, the survey, which would already have gone.
How did you get there, from which link are you talking about? The one in the back of the survey?
Inside the, uh, inside the pilot plane, well, I handed up electronically.
Okay.
The other thing would be in all of the individual comments that were made in the write-in.
Mm-hmm.
If we could do something, or the park group could do something, maybe to convince those to see where there is, you have to read through them and to say, okay, I think I saw that same thing, if we've groomed to see where there's.
I've done that.
Have you not?
But it has to be published as received.
Okay.
So, but I can give you the summary, it's kind of, yes. Repetitive answers all written just slightly different, kind of skewed it, but yes.
It's not going to be a clean cut, but if you at least get some commonality that certain comments, modular leave part, certain about trails, et cetera.
Yep, and I had put, um, a PowerPoint together for our park committee the last time we met and I apologize, I mentioned that to council after that committee and I don't think I ever did that, so that summarizes a lot of it also.
But that's just, yep, some mining of the information a little bit, but I thought overall it was pretty darn good to me.
She's done a lot, she's done a really good job.
And when she's not doing that, she's helping the planning commission with RRC activity, plus being treasurer, plus, plus, so. Definitely.
We do need a resolution to set our public hearing for that five-year park plan, is anyone interested in making that resolution?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas City of Perry will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Plan and whereas the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Plan will be available for the public to review for 30 days at the city clerk's office and library. And whereas the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Plan will accept and include written comments from the public into the plan if received by January 15th, 2023, at 3:00 PM to the city treasurer and therefore, the City of Perry does hereby determine to set a public hearing to receive public comment at the regular city council meeting regarding the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Plan on January 19th, 2023. the proposed five-year Parks and Recreation Plan on January 19, 2023, at 7:15 PM in council chambers.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded, was that you, Bob? By Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Chad, and everybody, Bob, that's been working on that. We can now move ahead to our next agenda item, and that's possible adoption of the resolution for the Spark Grant. Megan is here to tell us about that.
So in your packets, you have a, I apologize, it's not a very nice document to read. The application for the Spark Grant program is all digital and online, and all I can do is use the print form option, and so it's, it's small, and it's kind of mumble gentle. But I think I mentioned a few meetings ago that the state of Michigan announced the Spark Grant earlier this year. It is funded with federal COVID relief dollars that the governor designated for parks. And it is a zero-match grant, and it has three application periods. What I have in front of you will meet the deadline for the first round of applicants, so, I mean, fingers crossed that it starts aligning. If not, it'll give us a good chance for feedback, and we can reapply later in the series if need. The application I put together for this round focuses on Jubilee Park improvements, and the timing worked out well, so the application is based on the feedback received from the five-year plan. Also, a five-year plan is not required to apply for this grant, like it is for most of their grants. The minimum ask is $100,000 all the way up to $1 million. I was really hoping to go, like, on the very low end, and then I started getting crisis for things, and I thought, wow, there's not a lot you can do without kind of going for that mid-range there. So Kevin and I met with Richard Sinclair from Sinclair Right Recreation. They are a big vendor that installs these massive playscapes that you'll see around the state. They're Michigan-based, they're out in the Holland area. So he came out and visited us to see the space. I have for you to pass around just a glimpse at his first idea for what we could do at the park. That's not the right document, please. So we'll start one on each side. There's just some conceptual drawings. Again, I use this to get a dollar amount, not so much, this is what we have to do, but I had no idea what play structures cost or how to even guess what we should be asking for. So, the budget is based on an inclusive play area. It'll have a designated toddler area, new swings. It will incorporate the old dome climber. The gentleman was very impressed with the little dinosaur baby swing. He said it'd be pretty, like, it's basically a earth event at this point, and you've got to be cool to resurface it to make it match whatever we do bring into the park. So the playground park, the total grant I'm asking for is about $420,000. The play structure and surfacing is almost $200,000 just for that. The survey input also placed a large focus on improving trail systems and paving the already marked fitness loop. Seemed like a logical place to start adding non-motorized options to our city. I also put in some funds for landscaping, signage. Signage will be at the entrances of the park, as well as the existing exercise stations. Landscaping was small, more for just cleanup after everything happens. I wasn't doing any kind of major planting trees and redoing the whole park. If awarded, there will be no expense to the city, however, it is a reimbursement-based grant. You can request reimbursement in waves, so as things are happening, let's say excavation costs $25,000, I can request reimbursement for $25,000. They do encourage you to request reimbursement numerous times, not just right to the end. Fund balances have cash on hand. I have no concerns about cash flow and being able to make that work.
Did you get somebody to give you a quote for this landscaping?
No.
You're low.
Okay.
At least, at least double that.
I'll find some volunteers.
Your signage would probably go high, but I don't know, we didn't really get that far when we were looking at them.
Again, and I also built in a 10% increase over the bids that I've received, A, hoping the bids we receive are on the high side. Kevin knew a gentleman that gave us a bid on the paving, and they're not from, they're local, so maybe that drove the price up, and they don't need to travel. So this will require a bid process. It's part of the grant anyways, so there's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah, I would increase your landscape, at least double that.
Okay.
And your engineering phase might be a little low.
I wasn't even 100% certain we needed engineering. I didn't know that the park, because the park will be all inclusive, might include their own, it was, kind of felt like bottom-up, is what I felt like.
Play structure company might supply that or offer that, but it may be a little late on that.
Okay. Are you suggesting that I increase my ask, and you have any change?
I would.
I also want to stay below the $600,000, put this in a single audit, which just means more work than the.
Stay below the how much?
I'd say I think it's a $600,000 threshold. It might be $500,000, so we'll check that as well.
You're $419?
So it would be okay for her to increase to $490 if she can avoid a?
$460, somewhere in there.
And you think double the landscaping and engineering, what was your?
The engineering, I don't know, but it just seems like, if you have $45,000, engineers always come up with different.
You know, I was kind of basing it on what we came up with for the water tower project.
Right.
It's pretty much in that.
It's a little different, because they may require us to have, you know, find the actual property markers that are there, but we may have to redo them and that kind of stuff. They'll, they'll need engineering for the paving, do offsets so they can excavate it correctly and all that, you know, cut here and fill there, all that stuff, so. Going under a direction, though.
Any other feedback from Megan?
I was going through it, I think it looks pretty darn good with, with all the last tweaks.
Excuse me.
I think if we are successful, my only outstanding concern becomes that, you know, it's not, the park property just isn't as visible, et cetera, and we're going to do some things from a security perspective to allay some of the concerns that I think a number of residents have relative to security in that area. The more that we can utilize the park and get people comfortable with the improvements, et cetera, the better it would be.
We did have a whole meeting with Kyle one time. I don't know if Megan was there or not, but, and he felt that those concerns were in the past. Haven't had an issue in 10 years, so.
Okay.
Yes, there are a lot of people that still say that, but that's because they've old enough, long enough residents to remember when there was a problem. But not that we shouldn't have some sort of, you know, video surveillance or whatever we need to.
Exactly, because it's just geographically, it's not as traffic as our park out here is.
Correct, absolutely.
With the railroads and the subdivision, et cetera, the access to it is a little bit more secluded.
Absolutely.
Megan, would that mean that they would have to change the amount in the resolution if they so choose to do it, or do you want to wait?
I can't wait. The deadline to apply is 11:45 PM on Monday.
So I guess discuss with them what you want them to say in the resolution, instead of the former $19,500, which is in the last sentence.
Can you, can you write it so it says not to exceed, and then I can sign?
Yeah, well, we changed it to add $40,000, that $459,500, that should be plenty. It will make things work.
Well, it should be sufficient. I don't know, it should be plenty.
Plenty, there you go, that's a better word to use.
All right. Are you comfortable with that, Megan?
Any other questions for him? I'll read it, it's fine, if anybody else wants to.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City of Perry supports the Department of Natural Resources, the DNR submission of an application titled Jubilee Park Improvements to the Spark Grant Program for Playscapes and Fitness Loop Upgrades at Jubilee Park, and whereas the location of the proposed project is within the jurisdiction of the City of Perry, and whereas the proposed project is completed, if completed, will be a benefit to the community, and whereas with this resolution of support, it is acknowledged that City of Perry is not committing to any obligations financially or otherwise. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Perry Council hereby supports submission of a Spark Grant application for a project total of $459,500 by the DNR.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Parks Committee, and Megan. Good work. Moving on in our agenda, our next item is possible approval of donation, which is for a bench, and Megan had to do with this too, so stay right there.
But we have more. So Mayor Hamlin was approached early in the fall from someone that was inquiring to donate a memorial bench to be placed at Veterans Park. That offer kind of led us to the vote on a memorial donation program. I based it on other municipalities that I have seen do similar things. It's an internal policy that allows us, the city staff, to ensure that items that are donated to the park fit the setting, are of quality material, and we trust will hold up to time and the elements. We did receive, so one of the forms that I think was provided to you was a copy of what the memorial donation form looks like. We gave one option for a park bench for Veterans Park. It's kind of more of a classic traditional style, and then the bench for Jubilee Park is more athletic in style, so it'll fit the fitness loop and hopefully a play structure. We also added the option of trees, it is a more affordable donation option. So we did receive a $2,000 donation for a bench at Veterans Memorial Park. The donation of $2,000 will cover the cost of the bench, a personalized plaque, shipping, a concrete pad, and the installation upkeep that will be handled by DPW. Tonight's request is to order the bench and a plaque so that DPW can install it as the weather and their schedule permits.
John Sauter was included in all this discussion to determine how much it would cost for the DPW to actually install, because they'll be doing the installation and to cover the cost of any materials needed for that as well. And I'll tell you a little bit about John and Pat Stiff. They lived in the township, but they'd like their memorial bench here, because they spent a lot of lunchtimes here at the Veterans Park. So they asked their daughter to have that installed near the Veterans Park here. And I thought it was quite appropriate, especially since we have the memorial stones out, or blocks, I should say, out around the, not a fountain, but it looks like a fountain. So that's, that's about that.
So before you, it was a resolution, because we have confirmed from the auditor stakes that any donations you should be approving, so that's what's in front of you, also approving the purchase and installation of the bench, if you should want to.
I have a question before we do that. Do we need to approve this donation, even that we accept them?
It's in your.
Is it in there? I didn't read it, I just was asking.
Yeah, I can find both of it, so if you want to scan read it and make sure that you like it, you can change the words.
I just want, I was making sure that, just doing your job, that's all.
Yes. No, I had the mayor proof it, but feel free to approve it. If you think I'm missing words, please add.
I move that we accept and approve the following resolution. It is resolved. Whereas, Mrs. Betty Stiff has extended a $2,000 donation towards a purchase of a bench in memory of John and Patricia Stiff, to be placed at the City of Perry Veterans Park. Pursuant to the city code section 210.04, said donation will be accepted by mayor, and we shall approve the purchase and installation of the bench for the amount not to exceed $2,000.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we heard about the audit earlier, and now we need to talk about whether you want to approve the 2021 audit.
And Megan, can you answer any questions?
Yeah. She's.
Old chair.
Yeah.
Sit right up front.
I tried to get her stuff there, she's like.
I move that we accept the 2021-22 city audit as presented by Luke Downing, CPA from Clark, Schaefer, and Ecke.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Megan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did speak with Jennifer Porter of 330 North Madison Street, who now serves on the Board of Review, and she is willing to accept reappointment to that Board of Review, so I would appoint her to a term to expire January of 2026.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's reappointment of Jennifer Porter to the Board of Review for a term to expire January 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I did speak with Megan Galbraith and asked her if she'd be willing to continue to serve in her.
Well, I didn't put alternate in those.
And she, she serves as alternate to that group, and she said she would be willing to continue to do that. So I reappoint Megan Galbraith to the I-69 International Trade Corridor as an alternate for a term to expire January 2025.
I move that we accept and approve the mayor's reappointment of Megan Galbraith to the I-69 International Trade Corridor as an alternate for a term to expire January 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Moving on then to possible adoption of an ordinance that we had our first reading for at our last meeting, and that is Ordinance Amendment Number 368 regarding noxious weeds.
And just as a reminder, that section that we read last meeting was basically talking about edging of sidewalks and maintaining a clear path on our sidewalks around town. I move that the Ordinance Amendment Number 368 regarding noxious weeds, and which was read at the December 1st, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to the next possible adoption of ordinance Number 369 regarding odor abatement.
And once again, just as a reminder, this one, we didn't have really a clear ordinance on the books relative to odor. We had it for other visual problems, but not for odor. I move an ordinance Number 369 regarding odor abatement, and which was read at the December 1st, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is possible determination to post the city-owned lot on South M52 for sale. I think you all got the copy of the email that I sent to our attorney for his opinion on the questions that we had from our last meeting. Is there discussion regarding that? I also talked with Shawassee County Health Department, Katie Pleschek, who serves this area, regarding what would be required as far as the well that's on site, and I think you all got copies of that as well. She did say that if there is a septic tank on site, it would have to be crushed and filled if it's not going to be used. The well may have to be capped if it's not going to be used, but the county has no record of a septic system on file. If someone were going to try to build a house there, a raw land evaluation would be required by the county, as always. There would need to be adequate septic field and alternate septic field 50 feet from the well. The well would have to be tested if it is going to be utilized. If it's going to be purchased by an adjacent landowner who's just looking to make their property bigger, so to speak, and they won't be doing any improvements there, then they can sign off on that with the county by the use of a beneficial use letter. So that would save somebody a lot of money if they're not going to make improvements Based on the information we got back from the two realtors that did the market analysis, they could not clearly say if that had enough space on it to be built on, and by my calculation, it doesn't. But it's been a long time since I've done those calculations, so I wouldn't absolutely rely on those. But Justin said, yeah, we could go ahead and list it for sale now, or offer it for sale is maybe a better way to say that, because I don't think we really need to list it with a realtor unless you want to. Keeping in mind that if we sell it for more than the city paid for it when they bought it from the state, that any money received in excess of that amount has to go to the So we can advertise an asking price. We can tell people there's no public utilities to this location, that they would have to meet any criteria from the Shawassee County Health Department for whatever use they intend. The cost would be up to them. The county does require any property that's sold that has private well and septic, and they have required this since 2000, be inspected, both the septic field and the well have to be inspected. The seller is responsible to make sure that's done. They don't have to pay for it, the buyer can pay for it. So in our offering, I would say the buyer would be responsible for any inspections required by the Shawassee County Health Department and for their use and intended use, you know. So it's their responsibility to pay for it, but it has to be done, or they have to sign that beneficial use letter.
In the same way, if the well would ever have to be capped, that it becomes the buyer's responsibility.
Correct, yeah.
I see that as another footnote.
Absolutely. The other thing he did say, we could just say in our offering, is that there is title issues to be cleared, it'll take approximately two months. So we can just declare that in our offering, and we could enter into a purchase agreement with those contingencies in there, and then once we can remove our contingencies, then we could move ahead to close.
I don't see any benefit of waiting. It's not going to, you know, put it out there and see. It might take a while for someone to even want to buy it, or...
Yeah.
So...
I did call the previous person who's offered to purchase it, and just let him know that we were going to be posting it for sale, and he understood, and again, when we decide how much we're going to ask for it, I'll call him and let him know that. Excuse me. Was this for... What other discussion do we have? Or do you want to think on this for a bit and bring it back to the table again next meeting? We can certainly do that.
I'd like to talk about the listing price personally. We've got two, if I remember right, the number's right in front of me, I think that both of the realtors said that if it's a non-buildable lot, probably in the $700-$7500 range.
Right.
I'd toss out a number, and I think our, anything over $9,000, if I remember what Devin said, is goes to the state. So we ought to look at $8,500 maybe that we listed.
We could ask it, we could ask that.
I mean, if we asked that, we had to, you know, move a little bit.
Again, just to remind you, that previous offer was with the buyer paying any closing costs, so that adds maybe another thousand to that total.
If I remember right, that any money from that sale has to go to the water fund too, right?
Yes, that's right.
The water fund, purchase it and beyond.
Which is why I had to go to a...
Help pay for the new well that we have to do.
Any more discussion? Any decision? If you know what you want to do, I would ask you to make up your own motion, because we didn't make one, I'm thinking you might want to think about it. If you want to give it more thought, we can, you can throw out some recommendations of what you'd like in the resolution, and Devin could draft that for us before the next meeting, or you could make your own up.
I move that we proceed with the posting of a parcel as defined in prior discussion for a price of $8,500, with the stipulations that we have to have time to finish establishing a third title, that buyer's responsibility for any inspections required for the well that's on the property, buyer's responsible for any further costs that may be incurred with regard to capping, et cetera, of the well. Did I miss anything?
Sorry.
Pardon?
Closing costs, everything.
Closing costs.
Closing costs.
Buyer's responsible for closing costs as well.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chan. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll get that going. Is there any other business that might come before council this evening? Is there anyone else here for public comment? We have the FFA here tonight.
Yep.
Larry, are we going to ask them something?
I was going to. We can talk outside of here, but we do have in our ordinance committee that I happen to chair, and Mindy and Steve are a part of, and Sue sets in. We're in the process of talking about making some potential adjustments to our city ordinance as it regards pets and animals within the city, and as we began having discussion about it in our last meeting, we realized that we need to confer with you folks and with Juliana relative to anything that we do to change the ordinance, that we don't hinder the FFA activities. So I'd like to set up a time today, meet with you folks and with Juliana, and kind of go through our current ordinances and get any input that you may be able to provide or insight, so that we're taking that into account.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll get you my name and number right after this, so that we can get linked up here in the new, early in the new year.
Yeah, and I can pass that on to Juliana, so that we can pick that up.
We're very pleased that you guys are coming.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? I think Devin or Kirk has some.
I just wanted to share with you, Santa's mailbox is in front of the library, and it will be gone after December 19th. So if you want to write to Santa, do a letter, put it in the box, make sure you print clearly your name and your address, so he can respond. And Christmas fantasy was fabulous. Thank you all for coming.
And I'll second that. We had so many people who helped with that. Megan and Devin organized it, Mindy worked her tail off getting businesses to be involved, and many of the businesses really stepped up and did so much to make this year an exciting, fun event, and we probably had between 500 and 600 people downtown Saturday night. It was very well attended, very, just everybody seemed to be having a great time. So thank you all for everything. Any other council discussions or observations? Items you'd like to see placed on the next agenda? Not hearing anything. At 8:20 PM, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.